We thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight as we commence the 2025-2026 school year. Let us leave with integrity and let us always put the needs of others ahead of our own. As we start this new school year, we further ask that you keep our students safe and bless our remarkable employees for their unwavering dedication to LaFouche. Finally, never let us forget to put you at the center of everything we do. We ask all of this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Wright?
Here.
Dr. Giat?
Here.
Ms. Babbitt?
Here.
Ms. Petita?
Here.
Mr. Plantis?
Here.
Ms. Bourgeois?
Here.
Mr. LaFond?
Here.
Ms. Wales?
Here.
Ms. Sharpe-Chay?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, sir. Item two, awards and recognitions. A, introduction to new administrators. And that would be Ms. Martin?
Yes, ma'am, we have a few. I'm gonna begin with someone who was unable to be at our last board meeting, but some time ago, we announced the new executive director of operational services, someone not new to LaFouche Parish, Mr. Barry Gills.
Yeah, I just wanna thank Mr. Martin for the opportunity to run this new department and work with some of our best leaders in hopes to make this a better school district and improve the environment and the safety of our schools. Thank you.
We also have a new director of secondary education, Dr. Jacina Rodriguez.
I'm excited to serve as the new director of secondary, and I'm very grateful for the last 25 years being in LaFouche. Thank you to Ms. Martin and the board, the staff, all of the students, even some that are in the audience today that I've had over the years. You've helped move me into being able to do this type of position, so I'm very grateful, and I look forward to many more years in LaFouche serving all of you. Thank you.
And we have a new hearing officer, in fact, our first hearing officer, a new title position, Mr. Norman Edmonds.
I'm so excited to serve in this new capacity. Didn't realize I was being recognized. I'm actually here to support a teacher, but as I transitioned into this new role from principal at W S L F R, I take it as an honor and a purpose to continue serving this school district. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for this opportunity, and I look forward to joining Child Reaffirming Committee. So, thank you.
Absolutely. We have a new principal at Sixth Ward Middle School, Ms. Danielle Correa.
Thank you. I am so honored and excited to be the principal of Sixth Ward and continue serving the community and LaFouche Parish School District, and I'm super excited to see the kids tomorrow.
New principal at Lockport Middle School, Ms. Michelle, or as everybody knows her, Shelley Chassel.
Good evening. At 22-years-old, I walked into my very first classroom at Lockport Middle School, and to think that I'm standing here tonight as the principal of Lockport Middle School is unimaginable. I am up for the challenge, and I can't wait to have my kids back tomorrow. Thank you.
New principal, WS LaFond Elementary School, Ms. Laura Mazer.
Great, can't be extra. I just wanna thank everyone for the opportunity. I feel like I was just in here a few days ago. I appreciate the fact that Thibodeau has trusted me in coming to Thibodeau from Raceland and leading WS. It's an amazing school already, they have an amazing staff, and we're ready to create some lifelong wonders.
New assistant principal, Lockport Middle School, Ms. Holly Blanchard.
Well, I'm so excited to take what I've learned these last couple of years in administration and bring it back to my home community, and I look forward to a great adventure at Lockport Middle.
New assistant principal, Sixth Ward Middle School, Ms. Courtney Napping.
I just wanna say thank you for the opportunity to be in a assistant principal at Sixth Ward Middle School. This is my home community, so it really means a lot, and I'm looking forward to a great school year and many more to come.
And that is all for now?
Item B, LaFouche Parish School District student staff and group recognition. We're starting with... Who's the first group?
All right.
Oh, okay.
It's a privilege to be able to welcome you all here tonight, so that we can recognize some of the students and staff who are doing exceptional things, both inside the classroom and outside the classroom. So, we love to be able to recognize all of those achievements. It doesn't just make us proud, it's a testament to the excellence that we strive for within the district. So, we're gonna get started tonight with our first group of students, and Dr. Rodriguez is gonna announce those award winners. So, when she calls your name, you'll come up and receive your award from Superintendent Martin and Ms. Petita, and then you'll just turn this way a little bit, and I'll snap a picture of you, and then we'll have these up tomorrow for you to see on our website and on Facebook. All right? Dr. Rodriguez?
Okay, so, we will now recognize the students that placed at L.A. Family Center Career and Community Leaders of America, FCC L.A., State Leadership Conference in Alexandria on April 2nd. Our first student is Anthony Plazos. He scored first place on the culinary math knowledge test. Next is Natalie Whitehead. She was appointed the 2025-26 L.A. FCC L.A. State Vice President of Service Learning for the State Executive Council. She earned first-place silver medal for the Hospitality Tourism and Recreation Star Event, and she scored first place on the L.A. FCC L.A. History Knowledge Test. Ms. Janae Gray. She scored second place on the Personal Finance Knowledge Test. We will now have group recognitions. First, we will recognize the students that earned a first-place gold medal for the Professional Presentation Star Event, Teen Suicide Prevention Group, Ms. Janae Gray and Lindsay Landry. And we will also recognize the three students who earned silver medals at the National FCC L.A. Leadership Conference, Ms. Janae Gray, Lindsay Landry, and Natalie Whitehead. And all of these students are from Central LaFouche High School.
I'm playing Where's Waldo.
All right, so at this time, I'm gonna do the second or third group. This says to recognize the student that placed first at the Louisiana State Social Studies Fair Elementary Division in Sociology, and then placed second for the 2025 America's Field Trip Contest Nationwide Competition. This is Luke Bourgeois from...
Make sure you get a shoe.
We'll do a couple. We'll get one with a shoe.
These are the best kicks.
It's Mario theme.
Our next student placed second at the Louisiana State Social Studies Fair Elementary Division from Lockport Upper, Ella Kate Rogers. The next recognitions are group recognitions. We'd like to recognize the students that placed first place at the Louisiana State Social Studies Fair Elementary Division in Sociology, Mason Brode and Bentley Ucker. These next students placed second at the Louisiana State Social Studies Fair Elementary Division, the first group in Sociology, Eleanor Duprin and Kaylee Alamo. These students were also from Lockport Upper Elementary. The next group that placed second, Carson DeGreed and Caitlin Harrelson.
We will now do employee recognitions.
The employees are outside, so we're gonna swap.
I think this is the end of the first iteration, so if you are a parent or loved one of the children here, thank you for allowing us to have them. The first school night of the summer is here, summer is officially over, so go home, go to bed, get a good night's sleep. Thank you all so much.
He dedicated his profession.
Well, welcome to part two of our awards recognition ceremony. So, this half, we recognized the students previously, so now we're gonna recognize those employees who are going above and beyond and doing exceptional things in the district. And so, as your name is called, you'll come up and get your award, you'll turn to me real quick, and I'll get a picture, and then these will be posted tomorrow for you to see. So, announcing our first award is Dr. Rodriguez.
So, we will recognize the employee who was awarded the L.A. FCC L.A.'s Advisor of the Year, that's Jade Shanghai from Central LaFouche High School.
All right, our next recognitions will be for employees who received their Level One and some who received their Level Two certification through our Grow LaFouche program. I just say a little bit about the program. These individuals are working hard, they're teachers every day, they worked all summer to get their coursework, and then all year long with different activities to achieve this achievement for them. So, again, I couldn't say more about them, I'm so proud of them. We are very excited about this, it is a grow our own program, so these are our people, and they are staying with us, so we wanna thank you for that. This program could not be possible without all the great people in our district and work to help in this program and teach in this program. I call them our professors, we have a couple of them in the room right now, that help our individuals get to this level. So, again, thank them, thank Miss Tiffany Guy, Dr. Burleth as well, post a lot of heavy lifting for this with us. But let's go ahead and announce our individuals today. So, first off, we have Ms. Samantha Adair. Next, we have Mr. Lance Babbitt. Ms. Amber DeVille. Mr. Daniel Dickinson as well, but he wasn't able to be with us tonight, he said his regrets, but he also...
He's working.
Next, we have Ms. Macy Griffin. Ms. Kim Jarro. Mr. Nicholas LaPerouse. My hair, I couldn't see Ms. Nancy LeBeau. Ms. Ashley Lee. Ms. Brandon Trahaney. Last but not least, Ms. Christine Zerzinnis. I'm sorry.
It was close.
It was close.
Zerzinnis.
Congratulations. And again, all still employed with us in the group. All right, our next group, our next group is our Reach University, individuals who received their bachelor's degree through Reach University. A little bit about Reach, these are paraprofessionals who are working in our district. They complete all their coursework, four years, finish with a four-year degree while they are working with us. So, again, so proud of these individuals. They all, again, are employed in LaFouche. We hired all three of them this year, so we're happy to have them with us. So, I'd like to announce Ms. Hannah LaSang from Central LaFouche. From Lockport Upper, Ms. Kayla Troesclaire. And from Central LaFouche High School, Ms. Ashlyn Robert. And congratulations to these ladies, great work.
So proud of the work that the Grow LaFouche group and the Reach family now that's gonna be moving on to become teachers have done. I also wanna just give so much credit to the staff, Dr. Belet, Mr. Lee, Terry Elaine, everybody that made the Grow LaFouche thing happen, I'm sure I'm forgetting some folks that helped you all through this journey. Super proud to be part of this team. This came as an idea, hey, can we do this? And then the team pulled it off, and I get to take all the credit. That's what we do, right? In all seriousness, you guys are amazing, we're so thankful to have you with us, and hopefully, the next 30, 30 years will be with us. Thank you all so much. So, you can either get ready for work tomorrow or enjoy a board meeting, your call. Have a good one, guys, thank you all so much.
Board meeting held July 2nd, 2025, and we have motion. Ms. Babbitt, second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any more discussion or question or comments? If not, please vote. Motion carries. B, minutes of board meeting in service held August 4th, 2025. Do we have a motion? Ms. Sharpe-Chay, second. Dr. Giat, any public discuss, any public comment? Any more discussion or comment? Hearing none, let's vote. Motion carries. Item four, memorial resolutions. A, Ms. Charlene Porch, retired school secretary, and Mr. Plantis.
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Charlene Porch was hired by the LaFouche Parish District on June 16, 1981, as a school secretary at the Bayou Blue Elementary School. She retired on March, March 14, 2001, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 20 years.
B, Mr. Manuel Thibodeau, retired mechanic specialist, Dr. Giat.
Mr. Manuel Thibodeau was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on June 1st, 1983, as a mechanic specialist. He retired on March 25th, 1999, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for 16 years. Madam President, I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent, and that a copy of the resolution be recorded on a special page of our minute books.
With no objections, let the records reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our minute books. Item five, approval of policy and academic committee recommendations as per meeting held on July 16, 2025. Ms. Bourgeois?
Item K, to accept terms and pricing for Spark PD curriculum for a three-year subscription. The motion is to accept terms and pricing for Spark PD curriculum at a cost of $59,423.59 for a three-year subscription. So moved.
Thank you. Second by Dr. Giat. Any public comment? Any more discussion or comment? Hearing none, please vote. Item passes. Item six, approval of business committee recommendations as per meeting held on July 16, 2025. Mr. Plantis?
Thank you, Madam President. To approve the flood insurance renewal call recommended by Gomo Grove with Norris Insurance Consultants, so moved.
We have second, Ms. Bourgeois. Any public comment? Any more discussion or comment? If not, please vote. Motion carries.
Item B, to approve the proposed renewal from Humana Medicare Advantage for the 2026 plan year, so moved.
Second by Ms. Babbitt. Any public comment? Any more discussion or comment? Please vote. Motion carries.
Item C, to adopt a resolution authorizing the incuring of debt and issuance of $17 million of general obligated school bonds, Series 2025 of Consolidated School District Number One of the Parish of LaFouche, State of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith, so moved.
Motion, second by Ms. Sharpe-Chay. Any public comment? Any more comment or discussion, questions? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries.
Item D, to approve entering into a memorandum of agreement with the State of Louisiana Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, ROCEP, as it relates to cybersecurity for the fiscal year of 2025, 2026, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Plantis, second by Mr. Wright. Any public comment? Any more discussion, questions? If not, please vote. Vote. Motion carries.
Item E, to approve advertisement for requests for proposals for solutions or sensory wrong.
Motion, second by Ms. Wales. Any public comment? Any more comment, discussion, questions? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries.
Item F, to approve authorizing advertisement for proposals for E-Rate WAN, W A N, and Internet Access Services, 2026, so moved.
Second by Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any more comment, discussion, questions? If not, please vote. Motion carries. Item seven, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held July 16, 2025. Mr. Wright?
To approve the change order request in the sum total of $4,538.94 and add 12 days for reconnecting power to the fieldhouse, to the Golden Meadow Middle School Buildings 4, 5, and 10 projects, so moved.
Second by Mr. LaFond. Any public comment? Any more questions or discussion? If not, please vote. Motion carries.
Item B, to approve the change order request in the sum total of six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents for unforeseen substance sewer piping conflict and add fifteen days due to the sewer reroute and adverse weather conditions for the month of June 2025 to the St. Charles Elementary Classroom Addition Project. However, there was an error on item 4B at the July 16th land and facilities meeting. The motion was to approve the change order request in the sum total of six thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty cents for an unforeseen subsurface sewer piping conflict and add six days due to the adverse weather conditions for the month of June 2025 to the St. Charles Elementary Classroom Addition Project. The agenda item mistakenly listed the time extension as only six days. The correct total time extension is fifteen days. Seven days for sewer reroute rerouting and eight days for the weather delays. Any more motion? So moved.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Babbitt, second. Any public comment? Any board discussion, questions? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries.
Item C, to approve the change order request to add sixteen days for adverse weather conditions in the month of May 2025 and June 2025 to the LPSD Transportation Center Project, so moved.
Motion, second by Dr. Guyot. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comment? If not, please vote. Motion carries.
Item D, to approve the change order request to accept a sum credit of twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety cents for various omitted and add sixteen days for adverse weather conditions to the Golden Meadow Lower Elementary School and South LaFouche High School Projects. However, at the land and facilities meeting held on July 16th, the recommended action for item 5C was stated incorrectly referencing the LPSD Transportation Project instead of Golden Meadow Lower Elementary School and South LaFouche High School Projects. Therefore, I ask that this error be disregarded and we approve the proper recommendation to read as followed. To approve the change order request to accept a sum credit of twelve thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and ninety cents for various omitted items and add sixteen days for adverse weather conditions to the Golden Meadow Lower Elementary School and South LaFouche High School Projects.
Thank you, sir. And second by Ms. Sharpton-Jay. Any public comment? Any more comment, discussion, questions? Change. Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries.
Item E, to approve a request from South LA Community Orchestra to waive the fees for the use of the band Room and Thibodeau Middle School for a three-year period. The requested will be responsible for the three-hundred damage deposit and custodian fees. If you have any question, you can contact Ms. Bonnie Lee.
Motion, second by Ms. Bouchard. Any public comment? Any board discussion or comments, questions? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries.
Item F, to accept the request to hire Silas O'Brien for the Central LaFouche High School Scoreboard Modification Project with an OPC of three-hundred thousand dollars with funding to be provided by Central LaFouche High School, so moved.
Second, Ms. Wells. Any public comment? Any board discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna go ahead and say that Central LaFouche is quite impressive that they're doing this project the way they are and the presentation that they did coming to the board with all the i's dotted, t's crossed. They really did a really good job of coming and putting it out there for. So I hope that they enjoy their scoreboard. Well done.
And one of the things they emphasized is that academics will not suffer with this at all. No money stating from academics.
And it's actually gonna incorporate our learning activities as well.
Very, very proud of it.
Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion carries. Before we move on to new business, I just wanna make a statement that it looks like we go through these items very quickly, but these have all been thoroughly discussed at board meetings, I mean, at committee meetings and questions asked and the representatives are here to answer any of the concerns of the questions that we have. So I do wanna let the public know that a lot of discussion and questions have taken place at committee meetings. Moving on to new business, and we'll turn that over to Dr. Guyot.
Item A, to consider adopting the 2025-2026 LaFouche Parish School District Parent and Student Handbook, so moved.
Second, Mr. Wright. Ms. Martin, you have anything to say about that?
No, Madam President, other than this is the updated version of the handbook that's been long used by the school district to alert parents of all of our policies relative to our school operations.
And these are found online?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Any public comment? Any board comment, discussion? If not, let's vote. Motion carries.
Item B, to approve Airpin, Avon, and Hawkins and Associate Legal Counsel to pursue claims of the LaFouche Parish School Board for damages to its self-administered health insurance program caused by various drug-related companies due to improper insulin pricing and take appropriate action, so moved.
Motion, second by Ms. Babbitt. Any public comment? Any board questions or comments? If not, please vote. Motion carries. Before we move on to item nine, those people that will be signing off for the night, because we have two executive sessions, I just want to wish the students and the parents and the teachers and administrators and everyone a very smooth and exciting day tomorrow and hopefully there will be a fantastic school year, a wonderful year, and a very productive year. So those of you signing off, have a wonderful day tomorrow and God bless you. All right, item nine, the tentative dates of future meetings. A, committee meetings, Policy and Academics Committee, Business Committee, and Land and Facilities Management Committee, Wednesday, August 20th, 2025. B, regular school board meeting, Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion to move into executive session pursuant to the provisions of LA Revised Statute 4217-7 for the following purpose: to consider the findings of the superintendent regarding a student expulsion appeal pursuant to the LSBB policy JDB. Yes, Ms. Babbitt, move. Second, Dr. Guyot. Any, let's go ahead and vote. Is that a hand vote? Okay, hand vote.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, please note that we are moving into executive session at 6:40. Oh, Ms. Jean, just one more.
6:40.
6:40, thank you, Ms. Jean.